Good evening. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Sax.
Here.
Ms. Hershey. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Colbrook.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Present.
All right. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of previous meetings for March 1st, 2021, and March 15th, 2021. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Jared and seconded by Bill Colbrook, I believe. Are there any corrections? All right. I can't see everybody, so please speak up if you have something. All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Sax.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Additions to the agenda, I believe the mayor wants to add two proclamations to this evening's agenda. Are there any other additions? All right, Diane?
Yes, thank you very much. We have two proclamations, and the first is for National Library Week.
I think we have to approve that additions, don't we?
Oh, sorry.
Is there any concerns about the additions to the agenda? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Sax.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
All right, now you can go on.
Whereas, the Urbana Free Library was established by city ordinance on June 16th, 1874, and is one of the oldest public libraries in the United States. And whereas, today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people. And whereas, libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect. And whereas, libraries build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise, and by partnering with other civic organizations to make sure their community needs are being met. And whereas, libraries, which promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy. And whereas, libraries empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information. And whereas, library staff play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas, the Urbana Free and Wonderful Library has been a most enduring anchor in downtown Urbana, helping engage, strengthen, and revitalize the community, promoting literacy, providing access to a full range of resources, and is cherished by its residents today and will be for many years to come. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim April 4th through 10th, 2021, as National Library Week, and April 6th, 2021, as National Library Workers' Day in the City of Urbana, Illinois. Stop by the library tomorrow and say thank you to the wonderful staff of the Urbana Free Library. The next proclamation is in honor of National Community Development Week. Whereas, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urbana Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant Program in 1974, more commonly known as CDBG, for the purpose of providing local government with the financial resources to assist low- and moderate-income persons. And whereas, the City of Urbana has utilized nonprofit and neighborhood-based organizations to address neighborhood and human needs. And whereas, the CDBG program has made significant impact on our community through the creation of skill-training programs, new home construction, housing rehabilitation, street and sidewalk improvements, social service programs, senior and homeless services. And whereas, the City of Urbana has clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems. And whereas, the CDBG program is celebrating its 45th anniversary, during which the City of Urbana has received more than $7,800,000 in CDBG funds and an additional $23,900,000 in home funds. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through 9th, 2021, as National Community Development Week in the City of Urbana, and encourage all citizens to join and recognize the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Block Grant Program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have, next on the agenda, a closed session to consider pending or imminent litigation pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C11. I have a motion to go into closed session.
I will make a motion to go into closed session.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Bill Colbrook and seconded by Bill Brown. Is there any discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Sax.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
All right, with that, for the public, we will be going into closed session, and we'll return at the end, and we're open the meeting. I think everybody is back. I'll entertain a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
All right, moved by Jared and seconded by Eric. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Sax.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Diane, you're muted. Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is public input and presentation, so we'll start off with the council member training session. Have all the people been let in?
I just let Chandra in. I don't see any of the other ones present.
Yeah, I don't either. All right, so this one is Public Works. Is Vince going to do the presentation?
Actually, it's going to be me, Tim Cowan.
Tim, sorry, I didn't see there.
You're fine.
All right, it's all yours.
All right, thanks for giving us some time tonight. Tim Cowan, interim director of Public Works and city engineer right now. We just wanted to take a little bit of time to try to provide some additional insights that we don't necessarily get to always tap into during our regular meetings with everybody. I think, let me just share my screen to start, so I don't forget that. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep, I think so.
Big, big green circle?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Just, I want to talk a little high-level stuff, you know, generally speaking, the importance of the comprehensive plan to our department. You know, it hits on a couple really important items. They, they are trying to engage the public at a high level, which I think is extremely important with us to help us really prioritize the needs and wants of everybody in the city. You know, I think another big thing from the comprehensive plan that, you know, we think our department benefits from is having an opportunity to also provide some public education based on some of the feedback we get to, you know, try to discuss some of the logistics of some of the needs and wants of the community. Then I think another big part of the comprehensive plan that relates to us is the sustainability aspect of it. You know, the idea is for it to practically provide and promote sustainable growth so that we can ensure the long-term viability of the city as a whole, and we're not, you know, making decisions that maybe don't serve long-term purposes. I think another thing, just to hit on before we jump into kind of the who, what, and why stuff, is some of the normal things that we're going to bring to council. You know, we're going to bring state motor fuel tax resolutions for expenditures because they're allocated by the state, and both the council and the state have to sign off on our use of those things. Code and ordinance modifications, so if we have recommended changes to our codes or ordinance, we're going to bring those to all of you to review. Annual five-year capital improvement plan, we do a lot of work on that, developing that based on needs and financial capabilities, fee and rate modifications, a number of different agreements, including licensing agreements, franchise agreements, intergovernmental agreements, municipal electric aggregation agreements, long-term power purchase agreements for renewable energy. We also bring things like the Equipment Services Fund, which is interdepartmental transfer from all departments to support fleet maintenance that takes place here in Public Works. Will also be part of budget amendments, you know, as needed. And then, again, another one kind of on the outlier is grant acceptances. So if and when we are able to obtain grants to help, you know, close the gap on some of our funding constraints, you know, we have to bring those to you guys to review and approve, because most of those things come with conditions. I think we'll just jump into it now, you know, some of the background on Public Works. Funding is kind of a good place to start, just to kind of give you a scope as to everything that pours into our department. We have general fund that supports our operating costs. We've got capital replacement and improvement funds, which kind of closes the gap on some of our capital improvement projects that maybe are underfunded or have lack of dedicated funds for. We have the stormwater utility fee, just for stormwater management purposes, the local and state motor fuel taxes, which generally go towards transportation improvements. Sanitary sewer benefit tax typically is going to be paid towards our sanitary sewer operations, maintenance, and capital improvements. We've got the landscape recycling center fund, the home recycling fund, Champagne-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System Fund, which is probably one that maybe is not discussed a lot, but you know, right now, we are in a partnership with Champagne and the U of I to manage the existing landfill facility that we all took part in back in the day. There are still kind of some ongoing costs, but it's not operated anymore. Motor vehicle parking system fund, for all of the parking throughout town to help us supervise and control that. Equipment Services Fund is, again, the fleet management for all of the vehicles and equipment throughout the city, and then miscellaneous grants that pour into our department to help facilitate extra things. Along with funding, another big thing to hit on is, you know, we're governed by a lot of different local, state, federal codes, codes, statutes, acts, regulations. So a lot of times, this helps steer where our recommendations and decisions go. You know, locally, like our code of ordinances, the zoning ordinances, a lot of those things are going to kind of mandate the way, certain ways. It tries to get us in the ballpark for 90% of what we're doing between that, and then the state statutes, statutes from IDOT, I E P A, you know, Illinois Department of Conservation, a number of others. And then even from the federal level, there are additional things like the American with Disabilities Act, Federal Clean Water Act, and others. So a lot of these things govern our decision-making and recommendations from our department. Who we are, so Public Works as a whole is kind of split into four divisions, including administrative services, operations, engineering, environmental sustainability, and resilience. Our team is comprised of 62 people, 60 of which are full-time, two are part-time, the bulk of which are here in our operations division. And, you know, this is a slew of people with various skills to help, you know, really try to help facilitate decision-making here. You know, some of our in-house expertise include, you know, engineers, land surveyors, construction managers, licensed electricians, certified arborists, certified mechanics, equipment operators, maintenance workers, notaries of public, and a number of other ones here that I don't want to overwhelm you with, but this will be something, when we're done with this, you know, we'll provide this and publish this so that something you can refer back to. If you have a question, you're like, hey, do they do that? Do they have somebody that would be a good fit to answer this question for me? You know, certainly refer back to this presentation, you know, I don't want to just bore you with words either, you know, but I do want to give you kind of a brief overview of some of the things that we do and some of our qualifications. You know, I'd like, at some point, it'd be nice, you know, if we could act as kind of your qualified expert. So when you guys have a problem and you're trying to make a big decision on something, if something off this list is something you have a question you think we can answer, we certainly encourage you to reach out to us and ask it so that we can try to help give some background on it. You know, addition to the skills we have, we continue to hone those through professional development with a number of organizations. You know, the American Public Works Association, the IPW Man, which is the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, Illinois Public Service Institute, Illinois Society of Professional Engineers, a number of other ones. And these all provide opportunities for us to kind of idea-share with other entities, other municipal entities that are kind of going through the same trials and tribulations that we have to, you know, share good ideas and dump bad ones. You know, to just continue to further and improve our skill sets. We also have a lot of interdepartmental cooperation, just within the city, between Public Works and then all of the other departments. Some of the big ones that are kind of department-wide or city-wide, I'll say, you know, the Development Review Team is kind of like the concept-level review opportunity for people to ask questions and get insights from departments on what are, what are and are not, you know, either codes or require variances or need additional input or have, require council insights and approvals. You know, fleet management is something that's citywide as well, facilities maintenance as well. We, out of Public Works, kind of maintain all of the facilities here. You know, we've also, we work with Executive Legal on the capital improvement plan, and a lot of the various agreements that we, we have to issue for either public use of public right-of-way space, intergovernmental agreements, other items. The Clerk's Office, we work with pretty commonly regarding Freedom of Information Act responses and Open Meeting Acts notifications to make sure that we're on the up and up with all of that stuff. Finance, usually, we're working with them on our annual budgeting, procurement, parking enforcement, and then GAD reporting, which is Grand Accountability and Transparency Act that the state has issued in years past to kind of make up for the gap that they have on their end for providing the auditing that they used to do. It's essentially putting the accountability on our end. It's closing the gap and making the finalizations at the end of the year to say what we did and did not spend. IT, we work with them very frequently. They're currently, you know, going under a city-wide phone system overhaul, as well as time-tracking reporting systems, and they're working really hard on that stuff. They help us out with a number of other software and hardware items here in Public Works, and, you know, they help us also kind of with our asset management system, Lucidity, and then GIS as well. Community development, we work with them pretty frequently with the permitting and compliance coordination for development and construction that is kind of interrelated between both departments. We work with them on special event coordination. We work on the, we help try to give some insights on the comprehensive plan. And then, we kind of work share grant application management. A lot of times, they kind of, we may have ideas and they help us kind of steer that ship to make sure that, you know, everything, all the Ts are getting crossed and Is are getting dotted on that kind of stuff. And then police and fire, we work with them on emergency traffic control and access, you know, as needed. We have recently taken over abandoned bike pickup to kind of help relieve them of some of those duties, and then we work with them on the capital improvements that impact their departments. We're also involved at the community level. We do a lot of community engagement. One of the big things is, you know, we serve, Public Works staff serve on four different city commissions, including the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Sustainability Advisory Commission, Traffic Commission, Tree Commission. We're also involved in a number of other local public organizations, including the Champagne-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study, which kind of helps kind of work with money and delegate to the needs of the region. We also work on the intergovernmental Joint Sanitary Sewer Technical Committee to give our input as to how we think our system as a whole should be working in the region. We're on a couple different stormwater partnerships and groups. We've got some sustainability networks, Climate Coalition, then we're part of like Community Cleanup Days, Arbor Day Celebration, Earth Day Celebration. We provide facility tours for community groups as necessary as well, so self-promoting. I'd like to give a shout-out to Benny Gardner, who unexpectedly passed away this year in this picture. He was our electrical supervisor. We all miss him dearly, and he was very involved at this level, as you can see. What we do, so our four divisions kind of break out different tasks. You know, our administrative services division, they answer and filter a lot of public notifications. They respond to FOIA requests and kind of help organize those responses within our staff. And then they provide support to not just our department as a whole, but other departments of the city as needed as well. Very helpful and useful to kind of coordinate the whole shebang that is Public Works here. Our operations division, they're, you know, primarily, they're doing a lot of the boots-on-the-ground stuff out in the community, doing the maintenance and operating, you know, they take care of the wastewater maintenance, stormwater maintenance, street repair and maintenance, the public facilities upkeep, the electrical lighting and signals throughout the town, the urban forestry and landscaping. And then we also handle the fleet management for the entire city. And then we have our parking division as well, that oversees and supervises the meters and works with finance to make, make sure enforcement is happening there. You know, some of the special things, like snow and ice control and special events, you know, all we can do is plan for those, you know, we plan as best we can, and then we have to try to implement and work our plan. We can't control the weather. We certainly try as best we can. And special events, you know, those, those are a number of different things. You know, we'll just kind of walk through some of these. So like wastewater and stormwater, you know, we provide in-house. We do a lot of cleaning and televising of sanitary sewers and storm sewers to identify, you know, imminent threats of concern, to get those repaired immediately. You know, our street repair and maintenance, you know, we're doing pothole filling, spray patching, pavement patching, sidewalk sectional replacement. We're trying to address a lot of like the reactive issues. You know, we want, we want to identify these things so we can mitigate, you know, major safety issues that are due to condition. Public facilities, you know, like I said, we manage all the municipal facilities from here, oversee the janitorial contract. You know, we, last year, the year before, we had the condition, the facilities condition assessment performed that we're beginning to implement starting this year to start addressing some of our deferred capital reinvestment in our facilities themselves. Electrical lighting and traffic signals, we've got a crew that manages our street lighting, our traffic signals, all of our other electrical needs and signage to provide traffic control assistance. Urban forestry and landscaping, we've got, our crews are out doing systematic primming, taking care of limb falls, other tree maintenance, maintaining and upgrading all of our landscaping that's throughout the city to help beautify the city. And then we got our parking division, you know, they're repairing and maintaining the park meters. They're bagging rental spaces, they're collecting coins from parking meters, and they're assisting with audits, you know, to try to identify, you know, areas of where we think we have high usage, low usage, or we should have alternate usage for parking. Fleet management and maintenance, like I said, we maintain the fleet for the entire city of the banner. They oversee the fueling cards for the city staff, their record, record vehicle service history and repair reports, basically to figure out what that interdepartmental transfer should be for each department, so we know that everybody's paying in the right amount to be able to sustain vehicle replacement when needed. Snow and ice removal, you know, we developed a snow and ice control plan. We try to systematically employ that to, you know, the idea is that we can try to make the most frequently-used routes more accessible quicker, and then try to get to a point that every road is accessible in an emergency situation that we can get a plow out there in front of a fire truck or police vehicle or something, even on the local roads. We just recently acquired the new snowplow trucks you'll see in the orange and blue down there. Worked on getting all those calibrated through this season, and I think they're going to be a great asset for us moving forward. Shout-out to Mayor Marlin. I understand she's driving the snowplow truck that's dumping this load of salt here in our salt storage facility. Special events, we've got a number of these. Obviously, you know, COVID has diminished our abilities to do some of this stuff, but we all hope, you know, soon enough, we'll be able to get back to some of these things that we all enjoy doing. You know, some of the big notable ones, the Illinois Marathon, the Sweet Corn Festival, Candlestick Lane, First Fridays, and then a number of parades and other festivals that happen throughout the city. Public Works supports with traffic control, logistics, and things of that nature to make sure all of these events go off without a hitch and are safe for the public to attend. Our engineering services, we design and manage a lot of capital improvement projects as well as recurring maintenance and rehabilitation programs, where we work hand-in-hand with our operations staff to maybe develop systematic plans so that we're getting more bang for our buck on our recurring maintenance rehabilitation programs. We do construction management, a lot of environmental compliance and permitting out of this department. Do development plan review and professional land surveying, which is very helpful. The professional land survey is helpful across a number of city categories, and land acquisition, easement acquisition, you know, boundary surveys, things that are helpful to identify discrepancies in property bounds that impact the city itself. And then they, out of the engineering division, they manage a lot of the GIS information regarding our utilities that we operate and maintain. And our fourth division, Environmental Sustainability and Resiliency, we've got four divisions, subdivisions, I'll say, out of this. So recycling has been around in Urbana for much longer than it's been in a lot of other communities. You know, we now are able to offer curbside recycling, multifamily recycling. You know, we have a couple of different special events throughout the year to take special waste and electronics. We're good stewards to the community and the region as a whole, and promoting, you know, recycling as an alternative. Energy and climate's another big one that is, it started, you know, we're kind of running it out of Urbana, but it's become more regional. I think this is across multiple counties where we're offering a system for bulk solar and bulk geothermal purchases to encourage, you know, renewable energy uses to the public and private entities out there. You know, we also try to get involved with education and, and promotion of, you know, using these type of renewable energies. Nature and urban biodiversity, we've got natural long-care transition program. We have native planting support, monarch and pollinator planting support. The landscape recycling center support, we promote green infrastructure, urban forestry, and community gardens. Continuity and resilience, this is a good one that we've kind of started to spearhead a little bit more in light of COVID, is trying to identify a way to make sure that the government itself is, the operations are continuous. So if we have natural disasters, worldwide pandemics, things like that, identifying weak points that we can address with that. We also are looking at bigger picture things like distribution of energy generation, stormwater master planning to kind of incorporate a lot of resilient features, and then supporting the comprehensive plan from that position as well. Hours of operation standards, Monday through Friday, the hours kind of vary based on summer versus winter. Landscape recycling center is the same. We do have emergency on-call after-hours things for like sewer backups, debris removals, street flooding, things of that nature. I think, you know, one of the big things to hit on here is the why the people that work here in the Public Works Department do what they do. You know, some of the most common reasons we, we got from talking to a few people were, you know, community, problem-solving, teamwork, the variety of work, sustainability, public service, you know, making a difference. You know, I think a lot of these probably resonate with other city staff, all of you as elected officials, and, you know, citizens that regularly participate in these public meetings and commissions. And I think, you know, generally, we're all stronger together because of things like this. You know, having these, a common denominator of the why. You know, and that just happens to kind of be the National Public Works theme for the year, stronger together, which I would tend to agree, you know, and I would, I'd encourage all of you, you know, this has been a lot, and I don't want your eyes to glaze over if they haven't already, but, you know, please feel free to use us, you know, reach out to us if you have questions. We're, we're happy to try to, you know, give our input and recommendations in a way that, you know, helps you guys make your decisions, because you guys are really the decision-makers for the community. That's all I got. So if you guys got any questions, you know, feel free to ask away or obviously reach out if and when you're available or something comes up.
All right, I was muted. Eric, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering what they would consider the most pressing needs or or problems for Public Works?
I would say holistically, the biggest challenge we have is the amount of infrastructure we have to maintain and keep up. It's it's overwhelming when you look at it, which is why the comprehensive, going back to comprehensive plan is important because, you know, a lot of times cities grow in a fashion that make it harder to sustain. So by us, for example, if someone said, hey, do you guys want to annex this this subdivision in with this roadway and things, you know, looking at it and understanding that the roadway itself, transportation funds are really tied to motor fuel tax funds. And those are limited base, you know, we're not, by taking that over, it's not necessarily providing us the finances to really operate and maintain it well. So we we have to be considerate of what we're taking over. You know, we also don't want to take, it, there's a duty from us from a standpoint of, you know, we need to support citizens as a whole, you know, and individually, but at the same point, we don't want to necessarily take on problems that we didn't create and we don't want to take on problems that then make us compromise the level of service to everybody else. I think generally speaking, probably our biggest challenge is just the vastness of the public infrastructure that we have to maintain and the limited funds in which we have to do that with.
I'm on hold with middle grounds. All right, does anybody else have questions? Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, thanks, Tim. I know I've used your citizen's voice input form, I think now it's just called Contact Us on our website to report stuff. I'm amazed how fast Public Works responds. I've reported like two or three things on my way to work in the morning and it'd be fixed on my way home, like a sign knocked down or a sidewalk that was broken and something or a street light that wasn't working or something. So I'm really impressed with how fast you guys can respond to those kinds of things. I did want to ask a little bit about the stormwater master plan. I'm not sure if we've had an update on that. If we have, it's been at least a year. And it was something I was kind of looking forward to seeing because it's been planning stages for six years or so. So I was wondering if if you could give us a, just a kind of a status on that and when we might see an update.
Yeah, absolutely. So probably two or three months ago, we did receive what I'll call the pre-final draft from Crawford, Murphy and Tilly, who is putting that together for us. We're, we've begun to conduct an internal review. What we'd like to do is kind of do an internal staff review of it to hash out anything that we feel like either the consultants missed or there's some things that, you know, objectives that we had outlined for them that we it 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 may be that they've done a phenomenal job and there's very limited of that, but we want to get through an internal review, set up a meeting with them to hash things out. So what we can then bring to you as a council is more of like a, this is kind of the final draft with staff collaboration in this stuff for your guys' consideration. So we're we're working on that. I think we've got a couple other big things that have kind of trumped that in in terms of of staff availability and priority to to get to that internal review and then coordination with them. But I think probably it's going to make sense for us to target bringing some kind of presentation to council here in the next few months, maybe, maybe right after the fiscal year. We'll get through the capital improvement plan in the budget season and then I think that'll be kind of a good time to start digging into that a little bit and we'll, we'll bring the consultants in and they'll, they'll provide a formal presentation for the council with both them and our staff available to answer your guys' questions. And then, you know, that'll kind of be another opportunity from your guys' end to kind of give your input and or checks or balances related to that. And and I would envision once we get the staff input put into that, we would probably share a draft, share what I would call the final draft with you guys ahead of time for review so that we don't just come with a presentation and you guys have to formulate questions on the spot. We want to get it to you ahead of time so that you can formulate questions to, you know, be engaging at that meeting. I appreciate the compliments as well, Bill. I I think our administrative services and other divisions try real hard to, you know, get to the the citizens' voices as quickly as we can.
Yeah, and just to follow up on your development review process, I know it's sometimes when we've had plan year developments come before us, people will say, well, you know, it's going to impact the stormwater, there's not enough sewer capacity, it's going to be too much traffic. So in this, whenever there's like a plan year development or development review process, do you guys have a checklist? Are you on, are you on like a routing system where it will definitely come to you and you have a checklist, you can check those sort of things because sometimes it's mission, it's mentioned in the memos and sometimes it's not.
Yeah, so and I'm, I'm just getting up to speed a little bit more on that end of it, but yes, we do have a planned development review checklist. Where that falls in line with the PUD, I'm not exactly sure. Usually what we, when we get involved from a public work standpoint is if it's at like a conceptual level, we're talking about it at our development review team meetings. If it's, if they've issued a formal submittal for construction, usually that's when we get involved and we're checking things like compliance with our stormwater ordinance, compliance with our our subdivision development codes and things of that nature. Okay. And if someone knows better than me, you know, feel free to speak up, but my understanding is like in regards like a PUD, we're probably not getting involved in major review efforts until it gets to, you know, they're issuing it for construction.
If, well, getting a little into the, into the, or, you know, too detailed, but say something like that where it was to be approved and then the sewers weren't big enough to handle it, would we just have to make them big enough?
Not necessarily. So usually like something like that, we're looking at that really the the people putting those things together need to be looking at that is quite frankly, how that should be done is they should look at their development, if they're going to increase the sanitary sewer capacity significantly, they should be looking and asking us for information on those things ahead of time to prepare themselves for it. Because really, from our standpoint, it's hard for us to get involved until we know what they're doing, you know, if they haven't issued something to us for review, like a a normal plan development review, you know, we would look at things like if they have to get a sewer permit, you know, we need to ensure that our capacity is available, we need to ensure, same with like the stormwater stuff. You know, the stormwater code, you know, we we probably owe it some consideration for review. But, you know, generally, it's, it's trying to limit downstream effects. That's not to say that we might not ever already have some capacity issues out there in our systems. Without, you know, we've kind of started to go down the road of identified capacity with the stormwater management plan. We've done some sanit or stormwater modeling. You know, in a perfect world, in my opinion, you know, we, if we had a good model of our system that we could actually analyze it for capacity, which, you know, right now, a lot of what we do from the level of information that most municipalities have is theoretical, you know, we're saying if you're not putting more off your property than you were before, that's generally, you're not impacting us negatively. But that's not to say that other developments haven't happened, you know, pre-development codes that have already created capacity concerns. You know, I I would like to see us get to a point where we can start developing our stormwater codes based on, you know, known information and capacity compared to theoretical capacities. We're, we're not there yet. It's a ton of data to collect and we're getting closer, but it's just, it's just a lot when we have a system as vast as ours and and you really need all of the information to do a good modeling effort on things.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Tim? Eric Sack?
Well, really just to follow on, I think for like the PUDs, I think there needs to be some sort of process before it gets to approvals because these issues come up and then if we're asking the prospective developer to say whether it's okay or not, they're going to say yes. And, you know, what's the objective opinion on it? And I think also, you know, we do hear from a lot of members of the community that they see problems with, you know, runoff water and this sort of thing in the neighborhoods and perhaps we don't have as much information as we need that is objective, but there is the sense from some people that there are problems around the neighborhoods and that impacts these discussions on PUDs. So we probably need to more active role in it.
Yeah, and I I think in regards to that, Eric, is, you know, the PUD has to come for your guys' review. They're still going to be subject to meeting our construction and code requirements. So if they aren't able to either detain the amount of stormwater they need to on site to prevent creating new detrimental effects from runoff or downstream facilities, you know, that's going to be theirs to solve. And if we, if we say, hey, you know, you guys either have to forfeit a building because you have to do detention or you guys have to provide X amount of underground detention to fit this site, you know, that's, that's theirs to figure out. You know, if 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 the council, you know, base generally approves the PUD, they still, they still have a number of other hoops they have to jump through before they're going to construction.
All right, if there are no other questions this evening, thank you so much for coming today. And Timmy said that you would make that presentation available to to everyone, to city council members and
Yes, we will. And we'll, we'll, I'll work with our staff and we'll get it published online and then we'll make sure it gets pushed out to all of you council members as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks, everyone.
All right, next item on the agenda is public input. I'll give members of the public an opportunity to raise their hand for a few seconds or start that process. All right, so we have Alan Max Axelrod. Can you please state your city of residence?
Yes, Alan Max Axelrod, city of Urbana. Can you hear me and can you put the clock up, please?
We can hear you and they are getting ready to put the clock up.
Thank you so much. So my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm the campaign lead of No Amarin Shut-Offs, a zero-dollar, all-volunteer grassroots coalition of 51 member organizations and counting, spanning the state of Illinois, north and south, east and west. We've won four statewide moratoria on utility shut-offs. I'm here today to speak on the, in support of Resolution 2021 0417R. Forgive me, I missed the dashes. But before I get into more details, I want to say this past Thursday, we had 17 speakers at the Illinois Commerce Commission. And the week before that, we had 14 speakers at the Illinois Commerce Commission. You're only allowed one speaker per organization there. I didn't ask anybody to show up here today. So if they're here, they're here because they just care about this issue. They are not here because I asked them, I want to provide what this council has expressed is their optimal conditions for consideration, not under duress of the policy set before you. Last time that a similar resolution came before this body, you unanimously approved it. You also, on November 13th, were signatories to an open letter. Specifically, those names were Bill Brown, Jared Miller, Sharice Hersey, Dennis Roberts, Julie Lau, Diane Marlin. Additional signatories to that, of course, were Julie Pride and also State Representative Carol Ammons, State Senator Scott Bennett, both of whom are now sponsors of HB 2877, the bill to direct, to provide direct payments to housing providers and utility providers to relieve rent and utility debt. It does remove a step from the process and helps a lot of people get that money. And for those who do not want direct payments, they have the right to refuse and there is then an application process for dispersing those funds. So this is a really important resolution because it ties on both the fact that this is still a pandemic safety risk, that this legislation will help one side of the equation. Yes, we have money, but the problem is getting that money into people's hands. Fiscal year 2019, there were 236,000 recipients of the LIHE program, households receiving it. 2020, the latest information, fiscal year 2020, which includes now, the latest information is over 160,000. That's over 70,000 less households despite the increased need and despite the elongated application window of two months. And just to remind us how important this is, not from just an activist's words, but from other words of the community. This is Julie Pride on Carol Ammons's radio show from last year.
I'm really concerned. We have to keep people housed because we know that if utilities are shut off, often that means a family is going to temporarily move in with another family. And during a time of COVID, that is not something we want.
And Governor Pritzker was in champagne earlier today. He said something very concerning, which follows up on a remark made by Sharice when I had presented to you the condition of utility shut-offs and how it posed a continued health risk for the city of Urbana for the state of Illinois in February. Governor Pritzker had this to say when he was asked about the pandemic.
I am hopeful that with the rising number of vaccinations, we're doing, we're averaging over 100,000 a day. The increasing number of people who are fully vaccinated at the same time that we're dealing with this surge, I'm hoping that we can sort of overcome the surge for the very first time ever.
There are no additional supports unless if we have a body that advocates for them. Have a good night.
You're muted, Maryelle.
Thank you. The next person we have up is Tracy Chong. Can you please state your city of residence?
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. I'm going to comment tonight on the Illinois Public Access Councilor's determination that city council has violated the Illinois Open Meetings Act. First, what have we learned from the whole OMA incident? Where Mayor Marlin started muting speakers based on her new public input rules and then proposed the changes to the ordinance, which was then approved by council. Former city attorney James Simon provided justification for the new rules restricting public speech with a handful of Illinois Attorney General opinions and court cases. However, none of those cases actually supported the speech restrictions in the new ordinance. And this was brought to your attention multiple times in written form and during public input. However, Mayor Marlin and council, with the exception of council member Jared Miller, chose to ignore this unethical and sloppy advice from James Simon. Up to today, I don't understand how you council members could choose to ignore such blatant wrong information that was laid out so clearly by concerned residents. The only reason I can think of is that you choose to ignore it so that you can proceed with the rules so that you don't have to listen to true but difficult content. What has this brought you? A lawsuit that will waste even more taxpayers' money? Hours, men hours by the PAC performing the reviews and residents who had to file requests for reviews and defend themselves and their case before the PAC. Meanwhile, after all that misconduct, there's no repercussion to James Simon's unethical actions. He gets to retire gracefully and go work with another city. What has the city of Urbana learned from this? Are we going to have a meaningful discussion on how we could veer so far off course the city's mission and ethics? How do we ensure this does not ever happen again? I don't think just changing the ordinance solves the issue. Urbana's new attorney, James Wesner, was just appointed by Mayor Marlin and his hands are not clean in this case. In defending the city's misconduct, he accused a resident of having a long history of abusive, harassing and discriminatory comments, which was refuted by PAC. So just a heads up, this is the attitude your new city attorney has. Also, you have city administrator Carol Mitten insisting that the intent of the ordinance change was to focus on the manner of speech, not to restrict content. It is so obvious this was not the case, not then and not now. Even more disturbing was that after the PAC determined that council had violated OMA, Carol Mitten initially published an unredacted copy of the PAC opinion with the complainant's home address and email for everyone to see. How hypocritical is this? When you guys, the city, city attorney, have been so strict about redacting personal information when providing for your documents? This really looks like retail retaliation and a warning against anyone who dares ask the PAC for a review or questions to see these actions. I think this is a frightening road to go down and I hope that each of you actually speaks up. Let us know and address all these issues that I brought up tonight. Thank you.
All right, I do not see any other hands up at this time. One hand just popped up. Sarah Nixon.
Hello, city council. This is Sarah Nixon, and I would just very briefly like to express my endorsement of Tracy Chong's comments just now. I think it is highly troubling that the city has published the personal information, identifying information and home address information of the complainant. The person who complained about the OMA violations, whether or not you are required or not under the law to redact under FOIA and not redact when you upload documents to your, you know, to the city website is beside the point. I think the issue is one of principle and to echo Ms. Chong of just basic respect for the people of Urbana and for those very few who volunteer their time and willingly take on the role of watchdog. And I'd like to remind you all that these watchdogs, and I may perhaps be among, maybe you might count me as one as well, we represent a very substantial number of other people who, for one reason or another, are not able to engage systematically with the city council and city administration process and/or not able to attend public meetings and/or not able, for whatever reason, to offer public comment. We are not a fringe element. We do represent a very substantial minority, if not majority, of Urbana residents who simply want to see good government, sensible government, and government that is respectful of its constituents. Thank you.
I saw another hand come up. When Sarah's hand came up, Grace Wilken. Can you please state your city of residence? I should have asked that of Sarah.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Grace Wilken. I'm a resident in Urbana, Ward 6. And I just wanted to chime in briefly tonight and echo some of the previous speakers. And just a reminder that, you know, the city organizational power structure, that the people of Urbana are supposedly at the top of the power structure that everyone else employed or serving the city is seeking to serve. So please keep that in mind when listening to public comments. And also when considering the public input rules on the agenda tonight, remember that the public input is valuable and essential. And I don't think you can adequately serve the people of Urbana without giving them an adequate platform to express their concerns, ideas, needs, or whatever else it might be that they would like to share. I also wanted to speak in support of the last resolution tonight, item 11, on utility disconnection moratorium and acknowledging that utility shut-offs in the pandemic are a public safety risk. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Emily Close, can you please state your city of residence?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Marlin, council. My name is Emily Close. I live in Champaign. Tonight, I'm addressing agenda item number 10. On October 12, 2020, fewer than six months ago, the Urbana City Council voted to place restrictions on the speech of citizens who wished to verbally address the council in real time via Zoom or telephone call. That night, the council approved ordinance number 2020-09-049, which added section 2-5 to the city code. Almost immediately after this ordinance was passed, the mayor and some council members began aggressively monitoring and restricting the sometimes pointed, sometimes emotional, often critical speech of citizens who were attempting to participate in the democratic process. Free speech and open dialogue can be and often are messy and uncomfortable, council members. It's often critical of government policies and government officials, whether they're elected, hired, or volunteer, because in fact, you hold the keys to the kingdom. You have the power and the, and the authority. And yes, it is our job as citizens to hold your feet to the fire. It's called accountability. Tonight, in a half-page memo, the city administrator is advising you to walk back your bureaucratic actions of October 12th because in a non-binding opinion, the Illinois Public Access Council took you to the woodshed for an ordinance that places content-based restrictions on members of the public who seek to address the government. In other words, you violated the First Amendment. Going forward, perhaps instead of making a moderate cosmetic change to an ordinance that will continue to use so-called decorum and respect for the process as excuses to censor and control public speech, what if you repealed section 2-5 in its entirety? What if you started from scratch and built something less restrictive and less vindictive? Something that is accommodating to the viewpoints of others? Something that demonstrates an understanding of the public's right to speak and be heard? The people of Urbana are the ones at the top of the governing pyramid after all. Mayor Marlin, council members, and especially city administrator Carol Mitten, find your better angels. Because if you're in service to your fragile feelings, or your easily bruised egos, or your vindictive need to retaliate against citizens who challenge your actions or the wisdom of your policies, you are clearly in the wrong line of work. Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised this time. Right. So we will move on to the next item on our agenda. I have to place someone else. There we go. All right. The next item on the agenda is staff report. Do we have any staff reports this evening? Carol?
I have one announcement that I wanted to make, which we've announced this a couple of different times, but tomorrow night is the night of the Sustainability Advisory Commission meeting, where the primary agenda item will be a question and answer, a, you know, a discussion where the SAC is convening the community with representatives from the Illinois EPA and Amal Sakot and its parent company. We've been in contact with IEPA folks and with Amal Sakot. And I think there's going to be a lot of people available to answer questions. So I just encourage people, it's going to be on Zoom tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. There are documents that are included on the SAC website that, with the meeting notification. So everything we've collected up to this point. And I would just encourage anybody who's interested to check out that information and attend tomorrow night.
All right. Thank you. Other staff reports this evening? All right. The first resolution up is Resolution Number 2021-04015R, Resolution Improving the Transfer of Volume Cap in Connection with Private Activity Bonds Issues for Single Family Mortgage Revenue Bonds and Related Matters. So this is community development. Is Laura going to do this one?
Sheila.
Sheila.
That's okay. Mary Alice, I'd like to combine the two. The second resolution is on the same topic.
All right. Let me just read that for the record. So the second one is Resolution Number 2021-04016R, Resolution Improving the Transfer of Volume Cap in Connection with Private Activity Bond Issues, Single Family Mortgage Revenue Bonds and Related Matters. That's the second one. So this one is the IHDA series, and the previous one is the assist programs.
That's correct.
All yours.
So a private activity bond is a tax-exempt bond issued by local or state government for financing projects owned or operated by a private user. The allocation that comes from the city of Urbana is determined every year through the state of Illinois. It's based on population size. And so this year, we are receiving the right to allocate $110 per person for our capita of 42,046 residents. That gives us the opportunity to allocate $4,625,060 in 2021 private activity bond cap activities. We have received three requests this year. The first one from the Illinois Assist MCC Program. This is one that we've allocated the bonds to over several years. And in your packet, I included a map to show the location of down payment assistance given to Urbana residents. The, the funding from MCC can either be used as down payment or it can offset, set the closing cost for a qualified purchase. The Illinois Housing Development Authority had put in a request to receive the bonds as well. And they would use them for the purpose of developing, constructing, acquiring, or improving affordable housing within the state of Illinois. And as you can remember, IDA has also assisted with projects such as Aspen Court, although that wasn't, didn't have city involvement, but they did invest there. They've invested at Crystal Lake as well as at Highland Green. And then the third request that we got was from the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority. They have done a couple of affordable housing projects in the central Illinois area. The first one was done in Mattoon, and the second one, they assisted with a housing authority project in the city of Champaign. Staff took the proposed resolutions to the Community Development Commission in March, and they made the recommendation, along with staff, that we would cede our bond cap 50% to the mortgage credit certificate as well as 50% to the Illinois Housing Development Authority. And the reason is that those, both of those agencies have invested in the city of Urbana. So council will help this evening by either forwarding the resolutions to cede the activity mine cap to assist IDA, EIDEA, or you can split the money up however you like. There is no fiscal impact on the city, as these are just a bond cap that we concede authority to for others. If we don't make a recommendation, our bonding authority will go to the state of Illinois. And then after June 1st, they will allocate it to other projects throughout the state of Illinois.
All right. Questions for Sheila. Jared?
Another question, but I was going to make a motion.
All right.
I'll move Resolution Number 2021-04-015R, Resolution Improving the Transfer of Volume Cap in Connection with Private Activity Bond Issues for Single Family Mortgage Revenue Bonds and Related Matters. This is the private bond cap allocation versus programs for Series 2021. He sent to full council with recommendation for approval. And I would also offer that to be on a consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right. Moved by Jared and seconded by Bill. Is there any discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, it's always a very good thing for us if we're not using the monies that are available to us to share those with people and projects that have a great use for them. So rather than have them dispersed back to the state, it's always really good to partner with other organizations. And so I support this, which will allow two different organizations to use the funding and improve housing in the community. That's all.
Other, other council members. Sheila, I do have a point of clarification. These funds are not available to the city to use for our own building projects. That was always my understanding of these projects. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's not funds. It's the authority for them to buy bonds to be able to do private development. So Crystal View used the bonding authority, IDA did, to help build Crystal View. And I, I don't understand all of the IRS implications, but it is not cash that comes to the city.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right. That moves on to the consent agenda at the next city council meeting. Do I have a motion for the second resolution?
I'll go ahead and do that.
All right. Go for it.
Resolution Number 2021-04-016R. I move that this resolution, which is the same one, but for the IHDA for private bond cap, be sent to full council with recommendation for approval and to be on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Jared and seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right. That moves forward as well. Thank you very much, Sheila. All right. The next one is ordinance number 2021-04013, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 121 Goose Alley. Plan case number 2416, SU 21 Norman Baxley, Montessori School of Champaign-Urbana. I'm going to assume Marcus is giving a presentation on that.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, council. I am going to close my audio to make myself a little more stable and share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yep, we can see it.
Thank you. Montessori School of Champaign-Urbana, represented by Monica Hine, who is here tonight as head of school, requests a special use permit to operate a school at 121 Goose Alley in the B4 Central Business Zoning District. This property is owned by Baxley Media, represented by Norman Baxley, who is also here tonight, who applied for and supports the request. At its March 18th meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to throw the council with a recommendation to approve the request with conditions. And staff concurs with this recommendation. Montessori School of Champaign-Urbana is owned by the Montessori Society of Champaign-Urbana, which is a not-for-profit corporation comprised of the parents of the children and world in the school. After many years of small and sometimes multiple sites, the society purchased the school's current location off Berwash Avenue in Savoy. Programs at this site are directed towards children from kindergarten through secondary school age, extended-day programs, and childcare. The property is located at the intersection on the north side of Main Street between Race Street and Broadway Alley. And the site of the proposed school is the north half of the property, commonly known as 121 Goose Alley. The site has been vacant for two years. It's approximately 3,300 square feet, spread across one and two-story portions of this historic landmark. There is a dedicated entrance on the north side of the building and a shared entrance on the east side, which opens to crane, a pedestrian-only walkway between Main and Water Streets. Nearby uses include food sales and services, professional services, retail trade, and recreation. The zoning for the site and everything surrounding it is B4 Central Business District. The future land use designation for this same area from the 2005 Comprehensive Plan is for central business uses. The proposed use is that the school would assign the oldest students there, from 10 to 14-year-old, to the new location in downtown Urbana with two main benefits. First, being there opens up new experiential opportunities that are better appreciated by these older students. And second, it would free up capacity for younger students at the current facility, which is better equipped for their outdoor play. The proposed school would use the existing layout of the space, and no renovations are currently planned. The current floor plan layout is well-suited for the Montessori style of education. There are bathrooms, a kitchen, dining area, and the school is planning to sign a three-year lease with the applicant owner. Staff received one comment to required mailing to nearby landowners or signs posted on the property. Staff informed this caller that the state law requires 100 feet between any existing between any existing school and a new video gaming terminal license, a school can choose to move next to an existing gaming terminal gaming hall. New gaming hall licenses would not be able to be issued near the proposed school because existing gaming terminals downtown are already excluding the addition of any new gaming halls. City staff also proactively emailed the downtown merchants, including liquor licensees, to inform them of the proposed school and solicit comments. Staff received eight responses, seven in support and about potential conflicts with gaming licenses. Staff informed one enquirer that registered child sex offenders cannot live within 500 feet of school, and that there are currently no registered child sex offenders living within this distance. Most of the other responses strongly supported the school and included offers from downtown merchants of services to the students, such as yoga, art, and classes, as well as multimedia educational resources. This application fulfills the requirements for a special use permit. The proposed school is conducive to the public convenience of this location. The school has stated that this location provides students and their families the opportunity to practice sustainability by taking on the responsibility to get themselves to school due to its location and proximity to transit, restaurants, city activities and experiences, as well as places for hand-dressing. Having seven bus stops within a two-block radius encourages families and students to take public transportation to school. Bicycle is feasible as there are dedicated bicycle lanes on Main Street, Broadway Avenue, and Race Street. And the school has agreed to work with the applicant to install bicycle parking loops. Sidewalks in this area are also well-maintained and are regulated by the city's snow removal ordinance. Second, the proposed school is designed, located, and would be operated so that it will not unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the B4 district or to the public welfare. The school plans to start with a small number of students and gradually increase enrollment levels. Proposed school hours are from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. Students arrive between 8:00 and 8:15:00, depart between 2:45 and 3:00. These drop-off and pickup times correspond with the lowest periods of downtown traffic rates. School and city staff have discussed options for handling traffic flow during transition times to minimize conflicts with existing traffic patterns. City staff also researched how the introduction of a use protected from adult uses, such as liquor, cannabis, video gaming, and registered sex offenders, might affect activities in downtown Urbana's Central Business District. At this time, 10 students are enrolled for next year's program. The school would like to have up to 28 students by the 2023, 2024 school year. School would also like to limit the duration of the special use permit to this three-year timeframe, allowing both it and the city a trial period to determine if the school is a good fit for this downtown location and to determine if downtown Urbana is a good fit for the school. The B4 Central Business District has no minimum parking requirements, but the school plans to rent three parking spaces in the city parking deck. We'll talk a little bit more about that later in the conditions. Students will be encouraged to walk, bike, or take the bus to school. Grants will be encouraged to establish carpools. The school has developed a plan for students to be safely dropped off and then picked up from the school. We'll show you that here. Parents enter city lot one from West Water Street here, and park in any available metered parking space, drop or pick up child, and then exit the lot back onto West Water Street. During the period that a business may be using the east half of Lot One for outdoor dining due to COVID accommodations, parents will exit down Goose Alley here, along the green line, onto North Broadway Avenue. If all parking spaces in City Lot One are full, there are additional parking spaces in City Lot Two, east of Bunny's Tavern. There are also approximately 60 on-street parking spaces along West Main Street, North Broadway Avenue, and North Race Street within a one-and-a-half-block radius of the school, of which afford safe pedestrian access to the school via sidewalks, marked crosswalks, and/or signalized intersections. Recent parking surveys of the 122 parking spaces in lots one and two and the adjacent on-street parking showed an average 87% vacancy rate in the morning and an average 63% vacancy in mid-afternoon. And finally, the proposed school conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of the B4 Central Business District. The building would remain compliant with the regulations of the district and preserve its essential character. The transition of this space from a professional office use to an educational use is truly a multi-step process, including the requested special use permit, required building permits, potential approvals for an upgraded kitchen, and any required educational certifications. The building permit process would include review of the building's functionality for an educational use, which is different from requirements for an office use. Granting of the special use permit is merely the first and most straightforward step in this process. In all, the use of the property as a school would bring more young people and their families downtown, which would be very beneficial to nearby establishments and to the downtown community as a whole. The school meets the criteria for special use permit approval with staff recommending conditions to reduce potential conflicts with neighboring users. On March 18th, the Plan Commission held its public hearing. Commissioners asked staff about the proposed floor plan, how a school might affect liquor and cannabis licenses and traffic management. Both applicants were there to answer questions, but received no questions from the commission. There are also no complaints from the public. Commissioners had several comments regarding the building's suitability for an educational use and did not recommend a condition to require the applicant to adhere to the plan they had submitted. Staff stated that the proposed school should not affect future cannabis uses as the various uses are either downtown, or they are permitted, and the proposed school would not affect that permission. Staff explained that although current state liquor legislation prohibits the issuance of new liquor licenses to retail liquor establishments near a school, the local liquor commissioner could be able to waive this protective buffer if the school waives their right to the buffer. The head of school was notified that such a waiver would be required for the special use permit and has been talking to the board about signing such a waiver. Planning staff said that they would work with public work after research solutions that would comply with applicable traffic control regulations. And then following the discussion, Plan Commission unanimously voted to forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the request with exceptions. The findings are summarized in the staff's report. Two highlights are that the proposed school would not, would be conducive to the public at this location due to its ease of access by walking, bicycle, or mountain, or by car. And the proposed use would not be injurious or detrimental to the B4 zoning district because planned enrollment loads are reasonable and would be kept. Student loading can be conducted within parking areas in a safe manner, and daily activities would not pose unreasonable demands on the business district. Urbana City Council has the following options to approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with terms and conditions, or deny the ordinance. At the March 18th Plan Commission meeting, Plan Commission recommended approval with the following conditions: that parking and loading must be in general conformance with the plan submitted; that the special use permit would expire on August 31st, 2024; that student enrollment will be capped at 28 students; and that the school must rent at least three parking spaces within 450 feet of the school prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Later discussion, planning, and public work staff added in an amendment to that recommendation that if upon operation it is determined by the city engineer that school's pickup-drop-off plan creates safety or traffic issues, the zoning administrator may require the school to secure up to 12 additional spaces to establish a shelter zone. Fifth, that the school must work with the property owner to install at least three bicycle loops prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And finally, that the school must sign a waiver of its protective buffer from new retail liquor licenses and renewals prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And again, additional discussion between planning and public work staff amended that loading zone condition to say that they should start with 11 parking spaces, three for staff in the parking garage, and eight for student loading in city's Lot One. And then an option to secure an additional, four additional parking spaces if necessary. So these are just two flavors of this recommendation that city council can consider. That is the affirment. Again, the head of school, Monica Huang, and the property owner, Norman Baxley, are here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Marcus? Dennis?
Yes. So one of the questions that you mentioned was a plan that had to do with outdoor dining. Should there be outdoor dining in the parking lot setup? Currently, you don't seem to have that. Do you want to make a comment about what you think the possibility of that is that would limit some of the flow through the parking lot?
Okay, so going back to that plan, and I will share that screen. So at this point, I understand that we have not received any requests for outdoor dining permits.
Actually, Marcus, if you'd like, I can, I can take this on. So we are in the process right now of conducting some additional outreach to the businesses in downtown to talk about the plan. We have received some requests, and so we are looking at the details. So that plan, as shown, was what happened last year, and we're talking about whether or not the same thing should happen this year. So it is, it has not been decided yet, which is why there are many lines on that, on that drawing.
So you're taking into account of it, but you don't have anybody who's actually wanted to establish outdoor dining at this time?
Yes, we have, yes. So we're discussing that, the details of that, and then talking to other businesses to just talk about impacts and how to mitigate any of those impacts.
Thanks.
Dennis, to your question, assuming that the requests are no larger than they were last year, this east lot half of Lot One was reserved, as well as a full Bunny's Lot Two. Later, Bunny's Lot Two was scaled back to one-half of this. So if, you know, best-case scenario, everybody wanted as much outdoor dining as they did last year, people would follow the green line and pull into one of these parking spaces, drop off their child. The child would walk safely down the side of the alley. There's a sidewalk portion there, and then the car would exit out Goose Alley. There is a plan, I think, later this year, that Goose Alley traffic flow would be converted to one way. That hasn't been confirmed yet, but that is in discussion to, you know, improve safety there. If we don't have any outdoor dining permits, and it's probably somewhere in between those two things, then traffic would simply go through along the yellow line and pull through and leave out Water Street. The, the actual happening will probably be somewhere between those two things.
Yeah, I thought, I was sort of aware that Lot Four, I guess it's the eastern lot, would be likely to be an outdoor dining spot, but I guess I wasn't aware that people were considering the western lot. Okay, thanks.
Eric?
So if the cars have to exit on the alley, what is being considered to make sure that the children who cross the street, cross the alley, aren't gonna be crossing in front of the cars that are exiting on the alley?
Well, there is, the, the children who are 10 to 14-years-old would be expected to, you know, look both ways across any sort of street as they are in any typical traffic situation. And also then, the parents who are pulling through would be looking for their children. In addition to this, Montessori School posts a staff member currently at the school to do the transition period monitoring, and that will happen in this case as well. So parents would pull in, pull into a space and park, and school staff would be there to, you know, make sure that they cross safely. Later discussions, which I will bring up now just to maybe help direct discussion, staff have, are now recommending that the school rent a total of, let's see, 11 parking spaces, three for stuff in the parking garage that had already been secured. And then establishing a loading zone, probably in this strip of spaces, is what interim public works director Tim Collins' recommendation is. If city council wanted to follow that recommendation, a loading zone, school, student drop-off zone would be established here, or could be established here, that would at least get the children, you know, this distance away from the school entrance. Again, I want to point out that I did probably four parking surveys in the mid-morning at drop-off time and at the pickup time, and the parking lot was often, maybe had one or two cars in it. So there really isn't high usage of this lot, especially at 8:00 morning during the week. At 2:45 in the afternoon, there might have been three to five cars in this lot. So it's not like this is Main Street, or, you know, next to Lial school, where there's a lot of traffic going by as students are transitioning.
Jared?
Marcus, would it not be true then that if local tavern was gonna have that space for outdoor dining, that that, those eight spaces wouldn't be available?
I think this would become part of the discussion if city council, you know, wanted there to be a loading zone, then perhaps the outdoor dining might need modified. I think, you know, there are lots of solutions available here. It doesn't have to be an either-or. It can be an either, well, it can be an and, and, and.
And we may want to keep in mind, I'm sorry, we may want to keep in mind some flexibility for location just so that we do have the ability to be responsive to not only outdoor dining requests, but other things like special events, or although unlikely, it is possible someone may come in and wish to redevelop here within the three-year term. So we may want to consider flexibility on where that is located in order for it to be safe and convenient, but also to allow other uses.
Yes. And again, you know, this was one recommendation by the interim public works director. His recommendation was also that it not be a full-day, you know, reservation loading zone, that it would be restricted to those transition times so that those parking spaces could be used for other things, say at lunchtime. Or so if they need those spaces between 7:35 and 8:30 in the morning, which is before any of the businesses open up there, except maybe for one restaurant, and they need them between 2:45 and 3:30 in the afternoon, that's well before their hours. I think there's a lot of flexibility that can be done here.
Dennis, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering about, a little bit about the details about the Yeah, I was wondering about, a little bit about the details about the, the hours of education for the children. Will the young students be at, attending the building, the school, at the same time as the older students? Are they going to be both in class at the same time, or are they going to be sequenced? Maybe that's something that the school administrator can answer.
This is Monica. This is Monica, and I'm with the Montessori School in Champaign-Urbana. We currently do a stagger drop-off and pickup for our students, and we anticipate on doing the same thing if we are able to rent this space, because we do have some families that have, that will have kids, children attending across the two campuses, so it will be slightly staggered. Our current drop-off time right now and our current location starts as early as 7:40 in the morning. So parents will be able to drop off some of their younger kids and then come on over.
So does that mean then the younger kids start early in the morning? So do, do the older children also start at the same time? You said they were staggered. Can you elucidate that just slightly?
Sure, we currently have three drop-off times for our families. So it's, yeah, it's just staggered from 7:40 to 8:00, and then we have another one from 8:05 to 8:30, and then another drop-off from like 8:40 to 8:50.
And are those based on the age of the child?
No, it's not completely based on, yeah, it's just to make sure that our hallways are not crowded. And so this would just occupy one of the slots that we have, and the Urbana location would just have one drop-off, because all of the students will be in one group.
Okay, so all the students are in the building at the same time?
Yes.
That's really what I was wondering about, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Tim, I noticed that you had your hand raised. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, you know, the, the traffic control is just, it's a little bit challenging in the fact that, you know, the, by city code, you know, there's not supposed to be stopping in alleys unless it's commercial deliveries and things of that nature. You know, I think naturally, most people would say, oh, well, they just drop them off there at the back door. You know, that's easy, that mitigates crossing traffic, some other things like that. You know, we, we thought that as well, but the way the code is written right now, it's preventative from that. It also, you know, we haven't analyzed it in detail at this point, but you know, if you've got, at some point, 28 students coming in and 28 different cars, there's some stacking, you know, concerns with that area. We, we don't know when all these businesses are getting the commercial deliveries that they use to access this alley either. So, you know, one potential resolution was trying to just mitigate the use of the alley a little bit and providing a loading zone. And our recommendation for making that kind of like a temporary thing in that parking lot is that, as you've already discussed, you know, that parking lot in general is kind of highly sought after by many, you know, users in the downtown area, whether it's for parking, or event space, or, you know, COVID dining and bar service, things of that nature. So we didn't necessarily want to allocate, you know, spaces permanently that other area businesses may want to utilize. We're, we're trying to deter ourselves from, you know, solving private issues in public spaces, but I think if there were, you know, support for a makeshift loading zone in this area, as, as Marcus described, you know, low usage during the times that they would need it, but still it's open the rest of the day and the night for public use. You know, I think that that may be an amicable resolution to that. And with the caveat that Marcus has built in there, that, you know, if the drop-off things aren't working, we reserve the right to come back and revisit this and, you know, come up with alternative solutions.
All right, thank you. Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, there's a reference made that the parents are encouraged to, or required to follow the traffic pattern. What would be the downside, or what would be the ramifications for a parent who decides to drop their 12-year-old or their 14-year-old off on Water Street or on Broadway? You know, they're a 14-year-old kid, you know, they're within sight of the back door. You know, they, you know, they've got the ability to, you know, ride a bike all the way across town plus to prevent a parent from just dropping them off on Water Street or Broadway and just having them walk half a block to the, the front door of the school and not even engage the traffic pattern.
There would not be any legal or zoning requirement for them to use this proposed loading plan. People walk to school, bike to school with any routes they choose, as long as it's legal. That requirement is, we would prefer to create a safe option for them. But if a parent wants to even say, pull up in one of these parking spaces up here, because they
We can't see your screen, Marcus.
Oh, sorry. If one of the parents, say, works up on North Broadway, and they decide to pull into a parking space up here, and the child steps out and walks on the sidewalk and crosses at the crosswalk and makes their way in a safe, have the acceptable as well from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, I guess, I might, I guess I was asking a question to make a point that, that, you know, the first year, I think we're talking about 17 students, and the third year, we're talking 28. I don't honestly know that, 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 that area of town, which I'm at all the time, seven days a week, seems like, I will probably even notice the impact of the students.
Yeah, and I think from a public work standpoint, the point you make, Bill, is if it's not causing an issue and it's done legally, it's not an issue. But I think the, the point in providing the, the recommendation for requirements of this interim loading zone as needed is, if there are issues, we've got something in place already to enforce them to, to say, hey, you've got people doing this, and it's a problem. This is what, you know, we agreed to in the special use permit.
All right, other questions? Dennis?
One more. There is a, you know, we have done loading zones in alleys before. There is one across the street for the Courier Cafe. They have a ability to pull up to their side door in 15 minutes, I think it is, to unload their supplies that Helen Strong asked for, and we allowed several years ago. So it might be that stopping in the alley may not be quite the same thing as unloading grocery supplies to a restaurant, but there should be no problem really just establishing a loading zone, certainly in a parking lot.
All right, if there are no more questions, that ends in a motion.
Yeah, I guess I could make that. I support this. I have friends who run a Montessori school in Lyle, and it's a great educational experience, offers a really creative way of interacting, and I think the space is a useful use, good, a good use for a school. We'll just find out and see how that works out. So I'd like to recommend a passage of sending for approval to City Council, ordinance number 2021-04-013, an ordinance approving a special use permit at 121 Goose Alley. This comes from Planning Case 2416-SU-21. And the, this is for a Montessori school of Champaign County to be located at that location. And this is for approval to City Council.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Dennis and seconded by Bill Colbrook. Is there any further discussion? Jared?
Probably need to list out the recommendations in the motion that go along with it.
Yeah, that should be added, the recommendations about the traffic circle, the traffic flow, and et cetera. Cap for the, cap for the students being 28, and, and within three years, the school will be leasing 11 parking spaces within 450 feet of the school. Prior to the certificate of occupancy, the school must work properly to install three bicycle loops. And also sign a waiver for a protective buffer in case there's a retail liquor license and renewable liquor license, existing liquor license prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
And I still second it.
Bill Brown?
Okay, so the ordinance we have doesn't say it's requiring 11 parking spaces, it says three. You're saying that you want to make it require 11?
I believe that was the recommendation from Public Works and from Community Development, but you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm just saying the ordinance we have.
Right. My understanding from Dennis's motion was that it would include these additional items, so we would have to change the three to 11. But Diane, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to point out that the six conditions are included in the ordinance, and the one related to the parking, it specifies three parking spaces, and then the language is if upon operation, it's determined by the city engineer that the school's pickup-dropoff plan creates safety or traffic issues, the zoning administrator may require the school to secure up to 12 additional parking spaces. So that, that gives them the flexibility to modify the parking if they need, but the conditions itself are in the ordinance before you.
All right, so do we, I, I'm just trying to figure out, because at least what Marcus has put up here, it says must, the school must rent at least three parking spaces within, right? So it's this underlying part that is included, so I'm just trying to figure out. So what I'm hearing is already in there.
This is the version that's in the ordinance, and it was later discussion with Public Works that determined that they thought it was a good idea to require that student loading zone in the back. If City Council doesn't feel that that loading zone is necessary, at the outset, they could approve this initial version that then does give the Public Works Director and the zoning administrator the ability to establish that loading zone later. If you want to do the loading zone now, I can certainly change the ordinance to show this amended version that says have to rent 11 right now, and we can add four later if necessary. I'm sorry for the confusion.
So since I was the person who initiated this, it seems to me that there are, that you've already established that there are a lot of empty spaces in the morning, in the parking lot as it is. There should be enough probably for the smaller number of students who are going to be using it, at least the first year, to find a way to unload. And I think that if we find that there's a lot of additional issues that are rising up, then we can come back to this and establish a, a loading zone and talk to the school administrator to determine what they would feel comfortable doing. They haven't responded about requiring to, to lease more spaces, but I know that there would be a, a cost to that to them, that would be perhaps not very convenient for such a small school to, to survive financially. So I think we ought to just stick with the three spaces that are required in the initial written, written-up of ordinance.
All right, Bill Colbrook, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
All right, so it is the motion on the floor right now is as is written currently in the ordinance? Is there any further discussion? Eric Sacks?
How do people feel about putting this on the consent agenda?
I prefer not to, I'd like to study it a little bit more.
All right. Are you ready for a vote? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward, and it is not on the consent agenda. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2021-04-014, ordinance mending city code Chapter 2, Section 2.5 Electronic Virtual Public Meetings for the public input during virtual meetings. Carol?
Thank you. We received recently an opinion from the Public Access Counselor that in, there was, there was a, a few appeals of the implementation of the public input rules at meetings on November, let's see, November 16th, and I believe a November 9th meeting. And the opinion of the, of the Public Access Counselor was that the city had violated the Open Meetings Act in the implementation of the public input rules. And so I'll just want to read at the, at the end, the sort of summation from the, the PAC. In accordance with the conclusions of this letter, this office requests that the council instruct its presiding officers to refrain at its future meetings from applying its public comment rules, imposing content-based restrictions to comments that do not disrupt its meetings or impede the council from conducting orderly meetings. And it goes on to say, the Public Access Counselor has determined that resolution of this matter does not require the issuance of a binding opinion. So even, even when we get a non-binding opinion from the, from the PAC, you know, we do take it seriously, and even though it's advisory. So what we've, what we've endeavored to do with the ordinance changes that are, that are before you is to remove any reference to language whatsoever from Section 2.5, which deals with the electronic virtual public meetings, so that no one has, there's no misconceptions about what may be restricted. It has to be manner only, and it has to be any behavior or provocation of disruptive behavior. So, which is what the, what the PAC sort of focused on, comments that do not disrupt its meetings or impede the council from conducting orderly meetings. So that's what we're hoping to accomplish with, with these changes. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
All right, questions for Carol? I believe the, Dave is also on the call.
Yes, if you have any question, legal questions.
Dennis?
Yes, okay, so this is, you know, a useful, a useful experience to kind of fine-tune what we're doing during the Zoom conferencing. Certainly when we started out, we were trying out something that was new to us as well, and we didn't make it exactly perfectly through that experience. So now we're like coming back and fixing something that we've been pointed out very specifically that we didn't do well, so we're going to try to fix that. So the, the problem for us wasn't the fact that we, that individuals were speaking in a way what we thought might be disrespectful. The problem that the counselor wants us to look at is the fact that it's disruptive. So I was sort of, just sort of wondering, since we're not meeting in a face-to-face in the City Council chamber, when, what, what really breaches a Zoom meeting where it becomes disruptive? If whatever is said in the four minutes given and allotted to the individual is no longer constrained by, by a comment or word, then what is disruptive can only become, and what they seem to point out was that when a person is very agitated and perhaps is yelling or something during the meeting, it was pointed out that the individuals who were making the complaint were speaking in a modulated tone of voice, even though necessarily the content was displeasing to individuals, because nobody ever likes to be singled out and berated during a public meeting. But I guess the open, I guess the First Amendment allows whatever disagreement of a conversation needs to take place. It's not going to be possible for people to, to end up in fisticuffs during a Zoom meeting. So do we have guidance about what, what it takes to be disruptive other than talking longer than is allotted to you so that you're holding up the process of the meeting?
Well, I mean, something can be disruptive if, for instance, a person chooses to yell. That, that is a manner. It's not what they're saying, it's the manner in which they're saying it. I don't know what other kinds of things, but yelling is something that comes to mind for me. Dave, I don't know if you have any thing?
And what about if an individual resorts to a swear, a swear word or something? Is that considered disruptive or is that just poor, poor manners?
Again, I, I don't know. I suppose it might be that, it might be that if, if, if one word is a swear word versus a string of swear words because they're really interested in swearing and not communicating, that could be manner also because they're not really communicating something of substance. Dave, did you want to weigh in on this at all, or since I'm not a lawyer, I'm just kind of winging it?
No, it's okay. You're doing a good job, I think, in terms of explanations. And so, you know, what I'll share is you kind of hone in on exactly the question. What I'll point out is that the PAC opinion didn't suggest that the rules that are currently in place were really a problem. It was more in their application. And as you pointed out, you know, the, the biggest thing that they discussed was that the comments were done in kind of a comb fashion. So as Administrator Mitten pointed out, I think if you ran into a string of vulgarities or somebody's yelling and, you know, basically into the screen, I do think that that would be, you know, a situation where you could enact these rules and potentially mute them. My, my general sense of this is just that if you look at the history in terms of Attorney General opinions and case law, they all relate to in-person meetings. And so it's easy to make decisions when you're in person because, you know, most of what you see in those opinions and cases is it's some behavior coupled with the comments. And so, you know, the, the focus becomes more on that behavior. They may mention the nature of the comments because it goes into the idea of how agitated the person may be. And when you're in person, it's a lot easier to talk about the idea of a disruption because you're all in person. And it depends on how people are reacting to this and that behavior to be able to do that. I think it's just, in, in my opinion, these concepts have not caught up with the idea of remote meetings. Because, you know, in my sense there, I think there are things, even though you're not in person and create that kind of issue, there would be scenarios that rise to a level of, look, you know, we need to kind of deal with this individual and how they're presenting themselves during a meeting to be able to react and use these rules in that sense. And so it can be difficult to decide, you know, is there a bar that could be set on the idea of when you're looking at really just the words that are being said versus just kind of standing on your time limit? You know, a lot of focus on these things is really driven to the time limit because in, in remote, it's easy. You just have to withstand the four-minute barrage potentially. And then, you know, when they hit their limit, you cut them off. And as long as you're consistent, there's no issues there, you know, that's kind of somewhat the answer in this remote meeting world. So I hope that helped. I can certainly continue or answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I know that in the Roberts Rules of Order, I looked at that, I don't know, a month ago or so. And there is a procedure that the, if an individual is shouting and libeling, I think even a member of the board that they're addressing, that the, the sergeant, sorry, if they have a sergeant-at-arms at a meeting, that person is escorted out. But I think they have to be called out first, and then, then they're removed from the room. So there is a process even, you know, in open meetings of removing people from a procedure with their being disruptive. But what, what amounts to being disruptive is, like I think as you said, it's, for the most part in our meetings, even though there, it's hard to hear some of the words and the incivility that is even perhaps in a tone of voice or a condescending tone of voice, unless they go past the time limit for their, their public comment, there's not that much we can do about it. Those are my thoughts.
All right, other questions? I did have one question for Dave. So I'm thinking, you know, as you said, that we haven't caught up with the virtual meeting world. And of course, one of the things that happens in the virtual meetings is that there are bugs that are found in, in different applications and so forth. And so, given the updates of these rules, if, if there is some kind of nudity that is shown, which would mean that they would have the ability to show their camera, are you able to basically kick them out or tell them to turn their camera off? Do our rules allow for that?
You know, I think what you could do is think in terms of a language that's used in terms of behavior and conduct, where it talks about disorderly conduct. Now, I will say, you know, obviously, as I've participated in these meetings, is that I've never seen a commenter's video on. It's really just them speaking. And so I don't know if that really is something that the council has done in the past or even would allow for. Because if the answer is no, well, you're never going to see a video. You know, I suppose the question may be moot, but what I would suggest is if for some reason that were the case, you know, the concept of disorderly conduct is fairly broad in a sense, you know, as far as what could be covered. And I always think about this in terms of how a police officer would issue a citation for disorderly conduct. And it is basically the alarming, disturbing kind of concept. And so, you know, that it's, that scenario, I think, would fall into that category. And so I think your rules could account for that concept if that were to occur.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carol or Dave? All right, can I have a motion?
I guess I'll make that. Okay, I, this is concerning ordinance number 2021-04-014, an ordinance amending the City Code Chapter Two, Section 2.5, Concerning Electronic Virtual Public Meeting, Public Input During Virtual Meetings, or Zoom Meetings. I recommend that we accept the drafted ordinance into our process of procedure and forward this to the city council with recommendation of approval.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill Brown. Does this, do we want to put this on the consent agenda?
I didn't recommend it. It's, it's a touchy process. It's a, it's a sort of a touchy topic. I think we should.
We can keep it on the regular agenda.
Yeah, just, you know, we, I think we support it, but let's just not make it a rubber stampish experience.
All right, Jared?
I mean, I'm glad to see that this change is coming. You know, I, we had a lot of discussion about this when it initially came up. And I was the sole person who told all of you all that we couldn't do this. And it wasn't gonna, it wasn't gonna fly, and nobody listened to me. It took a PAC opinion to what a lot of people were saying. I mean, I guess I wasn't the only person where we're getting a ton of public input about people who felt the same way. And, I don't know, it just. I, I, I'm interested to hear from, except for Eric, because Eric wasn't on, on council, so he couldn't vote, couldn't have voted for it. From the rest of you guys, now that you've seen this, like, how you feel about the fact that we did this in the first place? What were, what convinced you guys the first go-arounds that this was, this was gonna fly? That's what I'm curious, I'm just, everybody's read the PAC opinion, and I think it spells it out pretty well. I thought I made a lot of the same arguments when we were discussing it. I'm just curious if anybody has, has your, your guys' thoughts on why, I don't know.
Sure, I'll do it. So I think that we were learning about public input. And of course, we had the Alia Lewis case before us, and so there was a lot of anger expressed in the public comment. Anger and frustration. And so that borders on antagonism or, or incivility. And I think we were trying to understand exactly where we stood in receiving that kind of public input. And, you know, people were, were complaining very strongly about individuals by name, our city staff. And I, I think that's reasonable, but I think the tone in which the disagreement was brought forward wasn't healthy for civil, civil discussion in a city council meeting. And I think that it was after we actually did experience doing a few shut offs that we found that the discourse from the public was moderated. So I think that we both benefited from the experience, and I think we've learned about it. And I don't think that there's any shame in changing the, the ordinance to accommodate the ruling of the council from the state because, because we erred. We can accept the fact that we made a mistake, and I think we all learned from it. And I think also that we've learned and seen that the public is actually providing input to us that is not, not necessarily less vital or less felt, but they're doing it in a way that is much more acceptable and civil and which we appreciate very much.
Anybody else want to speak? So Bill, would you take the chair for a second?
This, this Bill?
Yeah, sorry, Bill Brown.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary Alice.
Just kind of to, to answer your question, Jared, I think I agree. Bill had brought up the fact that the proof in terms of whether or not this was going to be appropriate was how it was implemented. And the, my major concern was not that the elected officials were getting, you know, attacked or whatever phrase you want to use. I think my concern was with the staff and the climate that the staff have to live in during these public meetings. And so, you know, I had thought a lot about this in terms of when I was committee chair, as I am today, in terms of what I would ask public participants to do. And my personal take on this was I was going to ask public participants that they have a concern to direct it towards the department that they are, are facing issues with. But my plan was not to mute anybody, but was to recommend that they just direct it to the actual office that they're doing. So that's why I thought it was worthwhile to give it a try and see how it worked. I did notice throughout the, the months this has been in place that I don't think anybody was muted after November. And yet we still received very harsh criticisms. There were still people who were called out that were elected officials with very harsh criticisms, and they weren't muted. So that, from my perspective, that's, that's how I was going to approach it, and that's why I originally voted for it. All right.
I'll reenactress the chair back.
Thank you, Bill. There's no further discussion? Jared, did you want to say something?
Sure, I, I just, Diane, you don't have anything to say about this? You were, you were the one who led this whole charge about doing this.
Diane is muted.
Yeah, I figured as much.
No, I have nothing more to say. Okay, all right, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward to city council with recommendation for approval. The next portion on our agenda is council input and communications. Would anybody like to?
There's another item.
Is there another item?
Number 11.
Yours, my bad. Resolution number 2021-04017R, Resolution Declaring Continued Utility Disconnections in Illinois to Be a Pandemic Safety Risk. And this was brought forward by Councilmember Miller. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I hope you all can forgive my sass about that last, that last one. I just, it burns me to have fought so hard against something and, and to see it come back around as being right all along when nobody would love with it, but I'm sorry. It seems mostly inappropriate with a little emotional issue for me, so I apologize for that. In regards to this resolution, which I, I brought forward, some of the folks working in the activist community approached me about creating a resolution to, you know, do a couple of things, basically outlining some of the issues that have happened since COVID, things that are ongoing, and mostly with ordinance to utility shut offs. So I'm sure you guys all had a chance to read through it. There's a lot of statistics in there, all of which we provided documentation for. There's a lot of, a lot of stats and a lot of numbers in there, which they all did a lot of wonderful work to compile. And then there's the three, the five things in the Therefore Be Resolved section, hopefully none of which should be controversial. I think it's important for local governments to take lead on these sorts of issues, to send a message to our, our higher-ups in state governments that communities really still feel the pressure and the danger that goes along with inaction on the part of government. And of course, we have had action since on HB 2877. So Section Three and Section Four, both which mentioned that it's still important, I think, that we keep those in and agree to support them, even though they've already acted, has already been taken on those. But I'm, I'm open to any questions if anybody has any questions about what was, was on there in Section 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or any of those statistics that were in there.
Are there any questions for Jared? So Jared, I, I read through HB 2877 today. There are additional items in there aside from rent utilities, which is evictions and foreclosure dates, court records. And I, you know, I wonder if we should add that into Section Three to relieve? Because it's, it's more than just rent utility debt.
Sure, I, and I, I almost was going to do the same thing. It's offered that we put that, that additional language in there. Did you want to add anything in particular to it? Did you have some language?
I, I did not. I just thought it would be good to be comprehensive in terms of whether, what that bill covers.
Okay.
To relieve, and is it to relieve Illinois rent? Because there's a whole conversation about using federal funds and, and how to get those funds directly to the landlords and to the utility providers. So I'm not sure if that relieving Illinois rent is, perhaps, perhaps you can just work on a little bit of clarification on what that bill addresses.
Sure. I didn't prepare language for it, but I can certainly offer an amendment in between now and the full council meeting.
Bill, Colbrook?
Yeah, I had basically two of the concerns that you just mentioned, Mary Alice. One is in Section Three, the word relieve, Illinois rent and utility debt. I, I don't know that I agree with relieve, especially when, you know, the, the, I believe the intent of House Bill 2877 was to funnel available federal funds, if not to the people who owe the money for rent, but to the landlords who are owed the money as well. So I think that language in that section needs to be clarified a little bit. And then in Section Five, the last three words, without means testing. I read through House Bill 2877 a couple of times, and I never saw anything about means testing. What, what guarantee would there be that somebody who absolutely has the means, but they're, they're using as an excuse the pandemic not to pay their rent? You know, we've, we've heard stories like that where people have a job. Their, their income hasn't, hasn't changed a bit. They've just chosen not to pay the rent. So what, I guess, why is, why is the means testing even in the resolution?
So the means testing in Five, I don't think was in reference to HB 2877. It was, it's more of a statement on. It was, it's more of a, a statement on offering up a moratorium that doesn't require people to meet a bunch of different metrics in order to receive assistance. And there are various thresholds, I guess. I mean, we've heard about them, you know, some people, it's as simple as just calling and saying, hey, I'm suffering from, you know, financial loss for X, you know, and I need to, I'd like to request being off of this. And for some of them, it's a extremely complex process. So that's more, you know, it's saying, let's, let's allow people and not put roadblocks, allow people to get relief and not put roadblocks in the way of being able to get access to it. Because, yeah, I guess there are, there are probably some people out there who might see that and try to take advantage of the system. But I don't think that, that, I, I don't know anybody who would do that. I, I don't know why you would be calling, trying to do something like that unless you really needed to help. So, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a philosophical statement where it's not about, not about the bill. And it doesn't get people weren't watching HB 2877. So it did pass in the House, but it hasn't passed in the Senate yet, so. I don't know if that answers your question, I don't know.
Not necessarily. I mean, it's, 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 what I heard was an opinion from you, not necessarily anything based in fact. So it's, I appreciate it.
Jared, I guess my only other question is, is that if this Section 5, City of Urbana calls on Illinois government to enact mandatory moratorium on utility disconnections without means testing, is the purpose of that statement during the pandemic? Or is it just forever?
I believe that.
I mean, there's, there's no limit, you know what I mean? There's no time limit on it.
Yeah, I, I believe the intention is while the pandemic is, is still happening and affecting people's lives.
Okay, well, I think maybe we should add that clause in there.
Okay.
I guess that's clear. All right, any other questions for council member Miller? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I guess I'll, I'll make it. I move Resolution number 2021-04-017R, resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a pandemic safety risk. And I'll recommend that be sent forward to full council with recommendation for approval, but not on the consent agenda, since there's going to be some language changes.
Is there a second?
Well, we don't have very much courage here. I think I'll make the statement that I'll support it. I do have a question. I mean, I'm, I'm not quite sure if it's necessary to do this comment, which Bill Colebrook, Colebrook mentioned about the last three words of the ordinance, without means testing. I think we ought to look into that maybe slightly some more, but I'm willing to, I know we're going to make some edits before we pass this. There'll probably be some amendments, so I'll second it as it is presented.
Moved by Jared and seconded by Dennis. Discussion?
Dennis, I can, I can offer more information about that before we vote on it again next week.
Great, because a couple, a couple of us were wondering exactly what that entails. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I don't think there's any controversy about supporting HB 2877. I don't even know if there's any, I mean, it seems like it has a lot of support in House and Senate, and all the witness slips, witness slips were for 99%. I think the question is that Section 5, what it actually means and, you know, mandatory moratorium on disconnections. That mean that, I suppose, you should say disconnections for failure to pay or something? Because there's other types of disconnections that have to occur regularly, but maybe that's getting too picky. But yeah, I question the means testing, but I think if there was some way to determine a metric that we, we probably don't have to come up with, Public Health or somebody will come up with a metric when the pandemic's over or when the emergency is over. I could support that.
Any other discussion items? Bill, Colebrook?
I just want to say, Jared, I mean, I support the philosophy. I support the effort. I support the foundation. I just think the wording needs to be tightened up.
Okay. Doesn't look like we have any other comments this evening, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yep.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward. Next item on the agenda is council input and communications. Does anybody have anything they would like to do tonight, save the night? Jared?
Just two quick things. Mary Alice, I was curious what, I know we used to do it a long time ago about asking people about where they live, but I was curious why you were, you were asking about that tonight? What, what inspired that? Because I don't think we have to, people have to tell us where they're from to make comment.
It's not a requirement. I was just, we used to have it on the, on the public notice when, when we were in person, and it's something I noticed that we haven't been doing. So it's not a requirement. People can say, I prefer not to answer.
I got you. I just figure we, if anybody else is going to do that, we ought to preface it when we're asking. You don't need to tell us where you live to make comment, because it sounded a lot like, tell me, or, or else I won't, I won't let you, I won't let you comment.
No, it's not a requirement. It's just part of the process.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anybody else? Okay, well, those are all the items on the agenda for this evening, and we will see everybody next Monday. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
We, we have a town board meeting, correct?
Oh, we have a town board meeting, yes. Don't leave. The meeting is at the council, the committee, the whole is adjourned, but.
I think a couple, I think Bill Brown left in a hurry. I'll, I'll text him.
But don't leave this meeting. The town board will follow immediately.